All right, 6:30 I'm going to open the Joshua City Council, 101 South Main, Joshua, Texas. It says, "Subject to the open meeting laws of the state of Texas." We do have Zoom capability. One or more council people may be zooming in. Also, any citizen that likes can zoom in. If you do have a question, there's a little flag that you can click and that will notify the city secretary that you had a question. We do have a quorum present. At this time, I'm going to ask Merle to lead us in the pledge, followed by the invocation from Robert Purdum.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm in Texas, I plead allegiance to the city of Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible.
Our most gracious heaven and father, we come before you tonight. We ask for your blessings on this council and on our city. We ask you, in these times, that you help us to make civil decisions that help and protect this community. Your Lord, we ask you to wrap all of our first responders in your armor and that you protect them and give them the wisdom to make sound decisions. Keep them safe from harm and thank you for allowing them to serve this community. These things we ask in your son's name.
Amen. Thank you, Robert. Right, did we have an introduction we needed to do? Chief?
I got behind on getting some of these guys in. I think Sergeant Fuller, we hired him during COVID, so I don't know if you've met him or not. Charlie Fuller, he comes with about 30 years of experience.
All right.
And Rakey Sindez comes, he's been doing some contract work in the military overseas, like all kinds of languages. He did some work with the Dallas County Sheriff's Office in the jail, so he's helping us out a lot. He's just about to get released and start working on his own probably next week or so. He's kind of super bright, but he's made some field training pretty quickly here. We also have Justin Cox, and he was hired weeks after Rakey, and he's also progressing through field training. He's from Cleveland and attended Hill College. He's the one that we picked up right before he finished the police academy there, so we got him to work, finally.
Good.
Great question.
Nice to meet you guys. Unless y'all would be real bored, you don't have to start.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next time, it's the budget workshop. Discuss the fiscal 2021, 2022 budget. Mr. Peacock?
Well, I wanted to start tonight, Mayor, with a second look at the personnel costs for staffs as broken down by department. I asked Amber several weeks ago to work out a spreadsheet. There was long enough that we could look at it, see everything, and break things down so that it's understandable. I think she's done a very good job of doing that. I'd like to go over those numbers initially, then talk about proposed positions that department heads have asked for, and then list what, at the moment, I'm looking at a recommendation to you folks. But I understand this is kind of a moving document for the next couple of months, so although some of these numbers might jump out at you a little bit, I have no fear. We're working to reduce some feebers. So the first page that Amber handed out is the current personnel costs that we are operating under currently, with the exception of a few positions that may longer be with us, like economic development coordinator. That position is open. This has broken down by administration, police, public works, municipal court, development services, animal control, fire, and parks and recreation. And also remember, parks and recreation is funded through TATB, so those funds come from, they'll come from the general fund. They're funded separately. So the biggest change you're going to see today, or what we're looking at, is one of the things the mayor and I have discussed a number of times, is the possibility or the opportunities to better the benefit package. The deductibles that we currently use are very difficult for anybody to use. A pretty large number of our staff is simply going to doctors or emergency rooms, not using the primary care because they can't afford the deductible and everything gets applied to that. It's cheaper to pay cash. So it's really a benefit that's not much of a benefit to a lot of them. They just simply don't, they can't pay $6,900. And the plan is an HMO. There's no copay at the doctor's office. Everything is directly out of pocket until they spend that first $6,900 prescriptions. So I set the target pretty high. We have changed our brokers, looking for some better options. And we have, I have asked them for, to start the, I guess, the initial battle, you might say. Is that a $3,500 deductible? To get out of the HMO, get back into a PPO plan, and maintain our health savings account, and some of the other things that we do, and then take a look at the other benefits, the life insurance, the dental, the vision, and see if there are any improvements there. So the next sheet that you'll find with, or the third page with the colors, is kind of where we're starting. One of the things that's going to jump out really quick, so I'm going to tell you about it before you see it, part of that, is health insurance. Currently, we're paying around $400 per employee for health insurance. And we started working our numbers at moving that to $1,000, to try to get us where we need to get. And what we're finding is, we're probably not going to get to that $3,500 deductible and still stay with something that we can reasonably afford to pay for. But that's where we're going to start. We will continue over the next few weeks. Amber's worked with these people for a number of years and has some people there that are familiar with her, and they're all working very hard to get this number down so that we don't have quite as big, where it's not 100% increase, or actually even more than that. So each time you see this, we're hopeful that that number will be down a little bit, but it takes a little time to get some of these numbers put in and received. And I think now they're a few more.
We're basing everything on the 10-1 number. They don't release the rates. Usually, they won't release it 60 days prior to 10-1. So we're always on a crunch again with the 10-1 effect. It does mean the numbers could very possibly change. Now, Mike and I, it does mean it possibly, especially the effective date of 10-1, just so that the numbers are, we know what the numbers are.
I guess, kind of, too, Mayor, I'm curious what the council's thoughts are. If y'all have, you know, routinely, we kind of estimate our best guess at what the rate's going to be, because we can't get our numbers before, we don't get them for January 1 until after the budget. And our effective date is January 1 for the insurance, too, that's. We could change that to an October 1, where it would start in October instead of January. And then we would have that number very well. So we'd know exactly what it is. But I'm a bit reluctant to move in the first year because I think people will be tied by, there's things that I feel we might need to work out. But if y'all don't have, prepare for one way or another, it may be possible to move it to a 10-1 and have accurate numbers going into it. I'd have it that way, until actually, after the budget's adopted, you get it.
My only concern would be that first year, that if people, you know, they started out the year, it was January 1 to December 31, and they're working on the deductible, then all of a sudden, we switch to an October 1.
Yeah, it'll start with.
It's 1-1 regardless.
So even if you change companies, they'll recognize that. Yeah, I mean, that was the only downside I saw, was just that first year. I think if we were able to get them more accurate, that would be. Because in years past, we've always budgeted pretty high, and then in most of the cases, it came in a little bit lower. We budgeted high, but, you know, it did come in lower, so it would be better to use actual numbers.
The reason for this, I mean, I'm watching and I'm hearing the news and I'm hearing the stories of the increased challenges to get employees to fight. People are still sitting at home. You know, I'm hopeful that that's going to end pretty quick. But one of the things that really used to be kind of a feather nap for Joshua, is we had really good benefits. We were able to keep people. 12 years ago, we didn't have less turnover. We had such, the pay wasn't always the highest, but the benefits were really good, and that attracted people. We're not going to, probably not going to get it as good as some of the bigger cities, some that may be self-insured or had the ability to do a little bit more of it. If we can at least improve these things for everybody and get something that, I mean, maybe it's not going to be $3,500, maybe it's $5,000, but at least it's something that's smaller. It's a place to start. Benefits are starting to be important to people, benefits in retirement. There's a great retirement plan working in local government in Texas. TMRS does an outstanding job. But we are lacking in our benefit category. We're spending a lot of money on a benefit that most of the employees can't use. So I'm going to ask that we, that y'all consider spending a little more to help us draw some more employees, to keep the ones that we have, and give a little benefit that actually is a benefit.
That's a good question. I didn't think of this before, but we're talking about going from $4,800 to $12,000, so that's $7,200. Why couldn't we pay the deductible as they used it? What, under our existing plan, what's the deductible? $5,000?
$6,900.
$6,900. Well, $7,200 would pay that if somebody used their whole deductible. You might have people that don't, so we'd save a little bit of money if somebody didn't use all their deductible, but that way, we could pay their entire deductible.
With the HMO plan, we currently have an HRA, which the city pays the first.
Second.
Pays the second $3,500. So after the employee, then the first, first number, then we reimburse. And that's because we don't have copays, the high deductible, and also an EPL on top of that. So if we go away from the HMO plan, and she'll pay the high deductible, then we can continue doing that. Or with a PPO plan, where you actually have copays, you can do a health savings account, or a flexible spending account, and kind of do the same thing. You can give them, say, $1,000, which they're giving $500 right now, also on an agency card. So there's ways to accomplish the same thing, but depending on the type of account, and you can't do certain things. There's different.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, basically, they'd have zero deductible if we're paying for it, and with $7,200, we should be able to pay everybody's deductible.
We would like the HRA, though, that they have now.
They wouldn't get that. We, you know, we basically pay, yeah, when they use it, we would sit there and pay. They'd just bring in the slip and say, hey, I went to the doctor, and this is how much my deductible would have been. We write them the check for it.
Mayor Scott Campbell has a question.
Okay.
I know that when you're, yeah, when you're figuring insurance with groups, the larger the group, the more the cost is spread out and lowered. Is there a way of sharing our group with another city or something that might save us some money?
You can do it interlocal, and we're looking at that, but I don't think we're going to be able to get it done for this year. We're looking at doing that with a couple of different places. I'm not far enough into it that I could report anything worthwhile. 50 is the number. With 50 lives, they refer to it, then we have the ability to negotiate things. Up to 50, the rate is what it is.
You have to be careful, too, because if you have another group, say if you wanted to partner with another city, if their loss ratios are really high, you don't want to cram their high numbers on trying to find somebody that has similar.
We're working all kinds of ways to bring this in, to make it work.
Well, I'd like to see if you could, though.
Your idea may be something when it costs around.
We're talking about $7,200. That should pay everybody's deductible no matter what. So maybe that way, we're covering it, and, you know, and we could conceivably not be out any, we could get some money back at the end of the year if somebody didn't hit their deductible, well, then that's money we get to buy. Hope you can check that out. I don't know.
So the other thing that this shows is that there are a few, there had been some discussion about across the board increases, but after taking a look at where we were, we actually realized that we had fewer people that needed increases than didn't. So it made more sense to do targeted increases to bring people more in line with recent surveys. So those are highlighted in yellow. And I believe you'll see. It's got the health and dental and all that stuff in it, too, but it just kind of moved down.
The sheet that has the yellow on it just proposed the star yellow highlight as part of the business that I would be interested in. All the others have been left alone. The other large sheet that just has no, mostly why it does current. And then there's a small letter-sized sheet that we have that has those positions set out. That includes total compensation, so all of those that the payroll taxes are as.
I had a question on one, like, on the public works. We had the crew members, and I guess we got them set up for like $31,200 a year, and then their total deal is like $49.00. That's almost like, so we're doing 50% in benefits? Is that correct? That just seemed a little bit high. I didn't realize we were spending that much.
So the cost increase is the cost of the benefits. Like Mike said, right now, we're currently only paying $400. What we're proposing, and that $1,000 that's on there, does and should really include everything. I did leave in that pop box, I left the dental, telemedicine, and life in there, and didn't touch it, but realistically, I'm hoping that that $1,000 will actually involve that back back out. And this is assuming worst-case scenario, if we're able to get down to. So they're going to curve in us with probably so many plans, your eyes are going to cross, and we'll riddle through them. And Mike and I were going to possibly, you know, getting onto a PPO away from that HMO, maybe still keeping a little bit higher than our facility. But that is probably going to affect me quite a bit, but I think that's worst case.
Well, this also has positions in it that have not been approved.
Right.
So some of these numbers are going to, if we put these in here to batch what.
This is just, this bottom number on this small sheet is just the means.
I would just look, but like, there are several of them, and it looks like we're paying about 50% in benefit. No, not 50, 50% of their salary's going, then they're getting 50% of that in benefits. I mean, that seems pretty good.
Yes, this number, this bottom number on this sheet, if we practice on that, that would take those positions off, and we'd be without. Yes, you're right. Benefits off the team, that first sheet would never go down. One of my previous coworkers, they got their numbers. They were budgeting for, and it's different for different cities. Some cities, they've actually seen. I don't know what, I don't know if it's just their loss ratios, if they just. So many variables, the city size, number.
You have any questions?
You guys, I guess one of the ones I would ask is, I know in years past, a long time, the budget was just kind of handed to you, and here you go, this is what it is. I'm kind of more of an interactive person. I'm curious to hear some thoughts or opinions if y'all have a, maybe a target deductible you'd like us to try to work towards, or I mean, if you have any opinion one way or the other, we work through this. Saturday is going to help a lot, too, because I'm going to get, right now, putting the budget together is, I'm kind of holding off on a lot of it. I'm seeing the rest of that is based on your goals and objectives. If we pull out of Saturday's workshop, that's going to give me kind of some direction, how to place things in the budget. So I know I'm going to get a lot of comments on Saturday, but the benefits are not specifically being involved in that topic.
Right.
I'm curious if y'all had something to add.
I think it's really like Amber's saying, it's hard to target some of these, you know. It's nice when you can bring it and say, okay, here's what it is. If you start getting us asking our opinions, you could probably get five or six different opinions, and then trying to get, you know, run down everybody's opinions is going to take a long time. So if you come in with a deal and say, okay, I can put this in the budget and make it work, well, then I think that makes it easier for us.
I think when lots and starts giving us the numbers and all the different plans, I think we and Mike and Joanna can kind of sit down and throw a drill, and not give so much at you, but you know, absolute best case, absolute worst case, one, two. And we could offer two different plans, and we do currently offer two plans, but nobody's on the second plan.
You have anything?
I don't know. I don't mean to sound ridiculous, but it kind of seems ironic to me that we pay 100% of their premiums, but they're upset about paying deductibles. Hardly anybody pays 100% of the premiums anymore, any business.
I don't disagree.
So it's, I'd like to see maybe a scenario where if we invest so much more in a good plan to bring the premiums, you know, to bring the deductibles and things down, maybe they kick in a percentage of premium, maybe their weekly cost or something. They would incur some of that instead of 100%, maybe, maybe kind of.
We have like a base plan that we get a percent of, and then they want to buy up and have the deductible, and they can.
Yeah, maybe see something.
Now that the plan is alike. That was something else.
It's sad that we've gotten to a point where the insurance companies control the industry. Instead of, instead of the consumer controlling the insurance companies, you know, used to, you had buying power. Now, our dollar's worth nothing.
And what the problem is, is we are below 55, so we have no buying power whatsoever. They just give us.
Y'all approve all these positions, we're going to be awful close to 50.
It doesn't get much better when you get over 50, let me tell you. That's just a comment. I mean, I don't, I don't really know.
We're going to continue to work on it.
It's so hard without being able to sit in front of an agent and say, no, it would be better, you know, for us. We just kind of have to go off what you can bring us.
We can use five different plans, either realistic, and say, you're picking what's best for you. So we try to find the best plan for everybody, or maybe just a single person, and you don't need any cover, whistle, bell, and family cover. And you're okay with a high deductible, but I may be somebody that has spouse, somebody that has a lot of followers, or I may have a lot of members, a lot of church, and I want to be, we would pay the baseline, and they could buy up.
Have the two different options from the seat.
But there should be a little bit of difference between the two options, to just apply them.
Scott, did you have anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The other thing for you, Mayor, is I want y'all to get a look at the requests that have come from department heads, the budget request for new personnel, for you, sir. The top is the, has been requested. The bottom section is so far what I've kind of gone through and set aside because of funding constraints, but, and that's, that's not done. That's just a first, first kind of run through. We'll still work to tighten up those numbers. Work through those. We're almost at a disadvantage to have a budget meeting, which is mandated at this town, before we have numbers. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me why they did that, but the legislature did that to us. And so really, all I can give you is kind of what we've been asked for. Next month, you'll get the full budget presentation with all the numbers, and then we'll have preliminary numbers from the tax office.
Yeah, because the final numbers come in July 31, right?
Final.
Yeah. So by the August meeting, we'll have, we'll know what the taxes are.
The other thing I have for you is, I'm going to send this to you also, but the other additional funding requests or items that do not make it to the CIP plan, the things that are under $25,000, are from everybody. The mayor and council, we're looking at $5,450. That's for training, Franklin legal fees. I don't know if y'all really go through and look at all this. It's over $400,000 worth of requests, but we haven't started really going through yet. None of this stuff here, thanks to CIP, you'd be considering. The other thing to note about the budget, I've talked to a couple of different city managers that I've called. How they are recommending that we include. The. Additional funding that's coming through the government for the CARES Act, we know what that amount's going to be and they're recommending showing that as revenue in the new budget year. So that. So the, it shows up in there, it's expected to be funded, we're going to receive around one point one million dollars. It will be here prior to October first, and then depending on. There are certain things that you can use that money for, there are certain things. It's a pretty broad list, so we have options, whether it's for law enforcement funding or fire funding. When we're for those areas, city infrastructure, computers, IT stuff. It can be used for salaries, pay increases, benefits, there's a lot of things that are listed, we do have to track the funds and report it. Do have to spend it by a certain date or we send it back. Then we will receive an additional one point one million dollars at the same time next year. So it's, that, that number is based on our population. We're going to work as a grant through the Division of Emergency Management, Emergency Management Coordinators, Chief of Emergency Management, so he's done the appropriate paperwork. Filed it today, rest of the funds, so I expect we'll see them sometime between now.
All right, will you have any questions, we'll go to the next item, which is to discuss the twenty twenty-one budget and tax rate adoption rate calendar. I believe that was in everybody's packet, did anybody have any questions on the calendar? I think in our August meeting, we'll have to decide if we're going to raise the rate or keep it the same, and that will determine whether or not we have to have additional public hearings. As long as we keep the rate the same or less, then we don't have to have additional public hearings, correct? Anybody have any questions on that? All right, next, going into the work session is review and discuss questions related to the budget report and financial statement, did anybody have any questions on the financial statement in the packet? Scott, do you have anything?
No, no, sir.
All right, thank you, all right, next, discuss the park naming policy, and I believe Alice handed that out. Before the meeting. One of the questions I had, this, Ms. Peacock, is seemed like when we were talking about that before. You know, you were talking about after somebody had deceased, you know, we wanted to wait and, you know, five years, and I didn't see anything like that in here.
Yeah, there's some crap here, and this is just kind of a rough draft that we put together. It's been a couple of months ago, and it, it, it just kind of got put on the back burner, but. I believe that. We should not name things after. People that are still living.
Right.
It's, it's to be safe.
You know, where their legacy.
You know, um, so I, I don't know if a period of time matters, um, but most places, that, that is one of the requirements, is that somebody, and they have to. Kind of contribute some significant thing either towards that area or. Something or other, we had also talked about. Different things that could be named, you know, that talks about planting trees in honor of people, you know, we really, really don't have anything. I don't know if that's a bad thing, but there are probably some people who have done things in the city that. I would think rised that or deserve that, so we can really amend this, it's kind of a blank sheet, we can add, we can add some, some language in there about. You know, a person. Deceased and how long, if, you know, if that's necessary to do.
What I'd like to see maybe is go ahead, is sort of turn this over to the type B board, that's the park board where most of the facilities would be, not all of them. And maybe have them, let them come up and work it and see what they come up with, and then send it back to the council versus us doing it and, you know, send it to them, let them, let them take care of that.
And they, they looked at this once before, but there really wasn't any, it was mainly the same thing, yeah.
Right.
So we'll put it back on.
Put it on the agenda and, and work through it.
And so we'll write this back, is there any other thing, I mean, I'll mention that to them too.
I think like, I, I agree with you on that, you know, I think you need to do it. For non-living individuals. Merle says he wants the park named after him before he dies.
Yeah, I want to see it. I thought we would name the register.
Yeah.
The shoe plants right there.
That's probably what he'd do.
All right, anybody else have anything on the park naming policy?
So we're putting this on.
Let them go through it, because they're the ones that spend the money on the parks and.
That would be back in time for August meeting.
Well, if not, this doesn't have to be, we're not under any time pressure on this, so.
We'll send it out to them a little before the meeting, so they have time to chew on it, make some records.
All right. All right, next item, discuss a request for a school zone to be placed near the Joshua Christian Academy, and I know Mike and I and Amber met with Tech Dot today. And they were going to do a study at a previous time, I forget how long ago, uh, they had requested this, and since Highway one seventy-four is a state highway. Tech Dot is the one that determines whether or not we can put it in, they did their study, and at that time, they did not feel like it met the requirements, but they said today, they're willing to do a new study. So. I think we told them to go ahead and do that, so we'll wait until we get to the results of the new study, if anything, you want to add to that, Mike?
The reason that they gave us last time was that there was not enough pick up and drop off traffic. To the front of the building off of one seventy-four, all of the pickup and drop off actually turned down Country Club and went around to the back of the building.
And we've got from Country Club, we have a school zone, so we've got that part of it covered, but.
That's why, it's because there was just not any traffic off.
Right.
They were letting off of one seventy-four, so, but they are going to take a look at it.
Anybody have any questions, Scott, you have a question or anything?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
Is there anything that can be done about them blocking Country Club when they're picking up their students?
I don't think so, because it's a upward streak, we have the same problem in front of Elder, Staples, all the schools, really, there are traffic jams before and after.
It gets pretty nasty through there.
Yeah, we might be able to work with them to see if we can work out a stacking platform where they have double lanes and, uh, they did that at the. Intermediate middle school, whatever it's called, out there, they have multiple lines, we may can work something with them that way, we can reach out to the school and see if. If there's something they can do to help address it, too, they're, they're usually pretty good about working with some stuff, we can look at, they've got a big enough park lot, we might be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on that? All right, did anybody have any questions regarding the regular session agenda items? Next, did we have anybody that was wanting to speak under public forum, this is an opportunity for citizens to speak for three minutes on any item that's not currently on the agenda, the council is limited to only responding with statements of fact. Do we have anybody? Next item is the consent agenda, which is to consider approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Who will you approve?
All right, got a motion by Scott Kimball, seconded by Merle Breitenstein, any other discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Uh, next item is discuss, consider, and take possible action on an ordinance designating the tax assessor collector of Johnson County. As the person to perform the required calculation of the relevant tax rates and preparation of the notices. Uh, this is a very time consuming job, that it really takes somebody, you don't want to just be the one person that has to do that, you want somebody that's got the knowledge, because. People have been doing it probably for all the cities in our county, and if you ever looked at what that formula is, you'll pull your hair out, so. I think it would be a good idea to have the tax assessor, and that's who's done it for us in the past, but does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Mayor, the only difference between this ordinance and the ordinance you passed last year is with this ordinance, it will continue each year until you cancel it, so we don't have to keep doing this.
Very good.
And it was recommended by our tax.
All right, anybody has any questions, I'll consider a motion.
I'd like to much more accept the policy ongoing.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Merle, seconded by Angela Nichols, to approve the ordinance designating the tax assessor collector of Johnson County as the person to perform the required calculation of the relevant tax rates and preparation of the notices for publication, any other discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Uh, next is discuss, consider, and take possible action on a resolution amending the personnel policy, I know Scott, you had asked that we table that. Wasn't sure if the fact that you're here tonight, if that would take care of it, I know Amber and I went over some changes today, so. Did you still want to table that or discuss it or what?
I'd like to table it. We didn't receive the red line copy until earlier this week, uh, it wasn't in the packet, I had to request it from Alice. And I haven't had time to go through and check everything like I would like to, so I think it'd be better for us to have a little more time to check it, look at, compare it. Before we, we think anymore, take any more action.
And I normally would say, hey, we've done a lot of work on this, and I know that time is of the essence, but I think since we've only got five and we're missing two council members, I think. Uh, we need to get their input as well, so I'm okay with tabling it, we need to make a motion to table it.
I move we table it to the. To, to the August meeting.
Okay, I have a second. Motion by Scott Kimball, seconded by Merle Breitenstein, to table the personnel policy, anybody have any questions or discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries five oh, uh, next, discuss, consider, and take possible action on board appointments, I think we have one gentleman. That was wanting to be on the, the type A, I did get your message today, Scott, that you're wanting these people to be here in attendance, I think it was a little bit short. And that, because, oh, he's actually here, oh, good, all right, we have the, uh, person here, uh, he had asked to be on the type A, type B. Or the test board, and which ones do we have an opening on? Oh, would you be willing to serve on the type B, which is our parks board, all right, do you have any questions for him, Scott?
Uh, yes, I'd like to know how many type B meetings or type A meetings or any other meetings he's attended so far.
Do you attended any other meetings?
No, I just.
Okay, he is not, he's just been here for a short period of time, so he has not attended any other meetings.
Appreciate you, appreciate you stepping up.
Like I said, we, we put that out in the letter, we're trying to get everybody, uh, that we can to be on a board, we want to have as diverse a boards as we can. I'll consider a motion to appoint Nicholas to the type B board. You have a second, I got a motion by Mike Kit, seconded by Angela Nichols, to appoint Nicholas to the type B board, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four one.
Before you move on, hey, Allison, we heard anything on, on, uh.
On Miss Pam?
Yeah, Pam.
I did talk to her, she'll be at the next meeting.
All right, uh, next is staff reports, does anybody have any questions on the staff reports?
I've got a couple.
I noticed chief, okay, go ahead.
Uh, well, if you got something else first, I, it's for the secretary's report.
Okay, I would just go have the chief maybe come in, I noticed you, you talked about having an uptick in. You know, some of the crimes, I know we've got a lot of the catalytic converters and everything else, uh, I know we've been shorthanded and now we're getting up to full staff, you think? That will help the fact that we'll have more people on the street and.
I hope that makes a difference, we had, we had a string of car burglaries, and everyone, one of them was in an unlocked car, so I think pushing out the message that people lock their cars, it was. I have an area right around the downtown area, suspected was a group walk, we saw some video, but nothing that was really clear, has to. About the suspect on that, public murders, they're just, they're hitting all across the metroplex, um, we, we do have some suspects identified, we're kind of working regionally. So we got a ready to seize to identify those people.
That was very concerning to me in this report that a lot of the people had to unlock car, we had four guns stolen, and that's very scary, so I don't know, Alice, maybe. I'd put that out every week, saying, you know, we do have burglaries from time to time, please lock your car, whatever you do, don't leave your gun in your car, you should be taking that in. At night, because, uh, four guns that have been stolen, uh, there's no tracing, no nothing, uh, if they're used anywhere, so. Anything else you want to comment on, chief, just, okay, anybody else have any questions, Scott, you said you had some questions?
Yes, on the secretary's report. Office equipment, commercial shredder, that's going to be used by all the departments. It looks like it's a budget item that she's requesting, uh, is that not something that should be spread across all departments instead of just coming out of one?
It's probably easier just to take it out of one department, because we're mostly admin in here anyway, and truthfully, maybe admin using it.
Okay, and then, um, you and I had already kind of discussed this, but on the liens, on the back, uh, last page. I would like to see the dates that these were originally placed, and if possible, what the original lien was for. And as we add any new, have any information available as well, if you can't get it on the old ones, then I think we should start it on the new ones.
That'd be really easy to take care of, and I've already started on the dates, so it'll be on next month's report.
All right, thank you very much.
Anybody else have any questions? One once. Mr. Peacock.
The, I know I sent notice out to most of you folks, but Chief Short is leaving us. He has accepted a position in another city. I didn't want to comment, I think he's done a fantastic job while he was here, police partner is certainly in a better position now than it was when he got here. Accreditation process through, and that was, uh, it's been a pretty big council agenda out of our, or goal item for a number of years, finally got that through and. Fully staffed, maybe for the first time in quite a long time. Things are really going well, there are good policies in place that. By any of the staff, and he's done an outstanding job that I believe he missed. Just wanted y'all to know that, there's a little. See you know. You know about the sports party? Yeah, there you go. Tuesday, we'll be having a little informal. Saying goodbye, crying session, whatever you want to call it, across the street, eat tree trees from two to four, you're all welcome to attend. So, chief, thank you for the things that you did here, we'll be missed.
We appreciate your service, chief, like you said, I think you've accomplished a lot, uh, like I said, getting this, finally up to full staff. We appreciate your service, Chief, like you said, I think you've accomplished a lot, uh, like I said, you're finally up to full staff, that's, that's tremendous, and. Definitely the accreditation that we got, I think that was, got everything in place that we needed so that we can start growing again, so thank you very much from everybody.
Yep, I appreciate y'all, it's a pleasure to work here.
All right, well, if nothing else, we're gonna adjourn at seven twenty.